Meeting come to order.
I rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing. Father God, we thank you for this night to come together as a elective body. We ask that you give us strength in our convictions, with your wisdom in our decisions, and most of all, your love in how we deal with our daily lives. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. All right. Welcome to the June 16th, 2025 commission meeting. We start at 5:30. Before we begin with our order of business, again, welcome. Any conversations in the audience, if you would take them outside, would be appreciated. At the end of the agenda items, we will ask for public comments, if any, and I'll ask that you raise your hand and be recognized, and then we'll go from there. So, again, welcome, and let's have a good meeting. First order of business is approval of the agenda as written.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
I second.
Uh, your bear?
Yes.
Oh, I'm gonna stop that.
Okay.
I do have a note here to add, executive session for non-elected personnel. So, two of them, please.
All right. Is it something pressing, or is it we can put it with new business?
You can put it with new business, I think.
New business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two of them did.
Two executive sessions?
Yeah.
Same reason?
No.
What's the second one?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, same reason, different people in it, yeah.
Okay. We'll put them before...
Before the rest of new business?
Yeah, okay. All right. And I guess while we're at it, before we proceed on, we have a work session scheduled for the immediately following this on the landfill, public works.
Yes.
I'd like to table that.
Okay.
Until we're three commissioners.
Okay.
If that would be fine.
Okay.
Should be next week or the week after.
Okay.
Okay. And so, now, approval of the agenda as corrected.
I move we approve the agenda as corrected, David.
I'll second.
Your bear?
Yes.
Milver?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve the consent agenda for accounts payable of $613,25 in the amount of $259,448.34, and payroll for the same date, June 13th, totaling $317,747.91, and the April financials.
I second. And then, can we go back to the minutes?
Oh, the minutes, yeah, okay. Always forget that.
Are you over?
Yes.
Yes. And then approval of the minutes from June 9th meeting, June 9th, 2025 meeting as distributed?
I move we approve the June 9th, 2025 meeting minutes as distributed.
I'll second.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Beginning with old business, juvenile detention budget, Commissioner Milver.
Yeah, if we may, have Bill come on up to the front, and I think he brought somebody with him as well. To top of office.
Yeah, very good.
Everybody hear me? All right. Go ahead.
Okay, so, so Bill had, before we got into budget, which I'm still really agreeing on, and took this into budget, Bill had some ideas before we approved the detention center budget. And so, I just thought that you might take the chance to talk about your ideas.
Yeah.
Which you wanted to do.
Here at the table with me is Angie. I'll have her explain what role she has. And of course, everybody knows, undersheriff Kevin Davidson, he's done some research and through some rich history or past financial records that we have paid Gerard Detention Center, and also what we're looking at into the future. So, I'll go ahead and let Angie introduce herself, what her role is, and her position with the Sixth Judicial.
My name is Angie Eads. I'm the Director for the Sixth Judicial District Community Corrections. And my part in this is that we employ the juvenile intake and assessment staff that work with law enforcement, that when a youth is picked up by law enforcement, whether it's a child in need of care, juvenile offender, my staff go in and they gather some information from the youth, and then, working with law enforcement, make a determination as far as where the youth will go. In 2017, Senate Bill 367 passed, which put in place a lot of different requirements. One thing was that child needed care could no longer be placed in juvenile detention. Runaways could no longer be placed in juvenile detention. And the state of Kansas started utilizing what is called a Kansas Detention Risk Assessment. So, my staff is trained in that. So, they go through and do the risk assessment. They touch base with myself or my deputy director to go through the assessment, to be sure that it's scored correctly. And then, based on that assessment, there's a determination in coordination with law enforcement whether or not a youth goes to the Juvenile Detention Center. There is a little leeway as far as overriding it one direction or another, making this decision if they don't score high enough to have them go, or just the opposite. But the overrides is very rare that an override is utilized for detention. I have been keeping track of, since about the middle of 2018, the billable days at Gerard. And so, I do have that information that I have shared with Deputy Davidson.
Is that what you gave me before, Bill?
Yeah.
The same thing.
And I am not sure on your list if you have updated. I can tell you... Let's see. Yeah.
So, you can see where it talks about billable days. That is days that we housed a juvenile at Gerard. That's what's considered, unless I'm mistaken on that, a billable day. I went back to '23. I apologize for not going back farther than that, but our approved budget for Gerard in '23 was $81,227. The following year, in '24, the budget went up to $90,000, and it's $90,000 for '25 as well. Johnson County and Douglas County offer the same thing that Gerard does, but they offer it as $150 a day rate.
That's been corrected.
It's up?
Yeah. That's been corrected.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a different rate.
Douglas County and who?
Johnson County.
Johnson County, the rate that he just mentioned, it's $180. It's $180. I just got noticed today.
Okay. So, it must have went up then, yeah?
Well, Douglas is the only one on this list, is that right?
Yes.
So, Johnson is also on it. Okay.
Johnson County just received approval last week from their Board of County Commissioners that they can start accepting youth outside of Johnson County. So, it was that they would just accept Johnson County youth into the detention center. But it's now been approved that they can accept youth outside of Johnson County.
Okay.
What this kind of boils down is money, of course, for budgetary purposes. And undersheriff Davidson has the financial figures of what it costs for billable days based on the records that he has, correct?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Underneath the Douglas cost would be what billable days would be if we were to house in Johnson or Douglas. And then, the Gerard savings would be minus the $81,000, for example, 2023, we would have saved $53,327 if we wouldn't have used Gerard, and we would have used Johnson or Douglas County. Same as the next year, I mean, last year, we would have saved $54,600 if we would have went away from Gerard and used, you know, Johnson or Douglas. So, I mean, you can go back, I mean, we could go back and find out, you know, what the budget amount was for 2018 through 2022. But if it was around $80,000, we could have saved $311,000 since 2018. That's an average of about $44,481 a year.
For a worst-case event, run that one time.
By getting away from Gerard.
Now, this discussion has been going on for several years, clear back to two county attorneys, which the county attorney at that time came up and strongly suggested that we do away with Gerard and move to Dub North, either to Wyandotte County, Johnson County, or Franklin, which Franklin County now is closed. So, the remaining one is Douglas County and Johnson County are the two remaining juvenile detention centers up north besides Gerard down south. This is one of the things that I've requested and that we look into and think about very seriously about thinking, changing our minds about looking somewhere else. That decision is yours, but with the figures that he has and how the laws have changed now, I think it's be better off to pay as you go, you know, pay each day as you go than writing a check for $80,000 or $60,000 or whatever Gerard's gonna come up with. And we only sent three kids down there? Four? You got the numbers?
So, have you went to Johnson County and Douglas County and toured those facilities? No?
No, I have faith. I mean, they have certain rules. I mean, it's state. They have certain rules and stuff they have to follow. So, I mean, I can go up there and walk around and say, okay, but...
And so, and so, worst-case scenario, I see in 2022, so far, from 2018 to 2025, 2022 would be our worst-case scenario at 548 with $180,000 a day. So, it'd be $98,640 if we had another year like 2022. I don't know what caused that year, but...
I can tell you that over a three-year period, and not that, you know, we would never run into this again, but over a three-year period, one juvenile had utilized 51.3% of the days in that three-year period. So, just, you know, from picking up new charges and being held in detention because of the seriousness of the offenses. And not, like I said, not that we're gonna run into the situation again, that you're not gonna have one juvenile that is doing that, but there was a three-year period that there was one youth that...
Possibility.
Took up that amount of days.
And so, not that you're here to negotiate, but is there a reason Gerard wouldn't do what Douglas and Johnson County's doing for us?
I can't answer that question. That's a whole new different group of people.
I've been on the board, but I have not been able to make a meeting.
Are you representing Gerard?
No, I am not. I'm just here to provide information about the laws.
Okay.
She's the one that handles the juveniles, with the juvenile intake officers. That's their boss. And she also keeps the records of the juveniles that go through. And so, with the data and stuff that she's provided, we're just here to tell you.
Okay.
Or explain to you.
Where there might be savings.
Where there would be savings at.
Okay.
Might be more cost-effective to go away from Gerard than use Gerard.
Okay. And would these other two counties, Douglas and Johnson, offer the same services? They would do, you would still do evaluations to decide and everything?
That's, yes, that's correct, because a youth would be, you know, here in contact with law enforcement here.
Okay.
That's correct. I mean, as far as services while they're in the detention center, there has been some statute that has recently passed. And, I mean, all detention centers would be included in it, but they're supposed to start providing, like, evidence-based programming for youth, cognitive therapy, individual therapy, those types of things for youth while they're in the detention center.
Okay. And these other facilities, Bill, they would provide everything that we're required to provide if you were to so use them? They wouldn't start doing separate billables, right?
What other, are you talking about Douglas?
Anything that could, yes, those.
No, we'll stick with Johnson County. Once we enter into a mutual understanding with them, then that's what we...
Lynn County just came to an agreement with them.
Gotcha. Okay.
Juveniles.
Do you have questions, David?
I think you pretty much asked the ones, and they provided the information I needed. I really don't have, I mean, I know that $90,000 a year is...
May I talk to some things?
Budget, yeah.
I would agree that this is probably a better way to go. When I look at, my numbers are a little bit different, which is interesting because it's what's been billed to us. So, we have higher numbers that has been billed to us. So, it makes me wonder if we were overbilled for kids. So, it makes me even more concerned, because when I do the math, it's like $236 per day. We got up to the point of $270 a day. And I don't know who told you what the budget was, but they were wrong. The last two years, I've had a hard time getting contracts. In '24, the contracted amount was $98,000, and this year, it's $134,000. So, definitely something worth looking into.
Well, it's my understanding that they utilize a formula based on, like, how many youth were there during the previous year, those types of things. It would be interesting to sit down with my numbers that I have and your numbers
Same.
To kind of answer a question that you have. So, being the Sixth Judicial District Community Corrections, I have experience with Miami County that has not ever been in a contract with a detention center as far as my knowledge, which is 27 years. And when Franklin County closed, they started utilizing Douglas County, and the county is not charged, like, extra expenses.
Okay, thank you.
So, it is just the amount for the day.
Okay.
So, to kind of help answer your question.
Thank you.
And back to the, on the budget, you said it's $134,000 for this year?
Yeah.
And then, but if we were to adopt this...
And I didn't know that when the budget was created, because it was sitting in an inbox. And so, when we cleaned up some things, I found that, and so, that number is actually a lot higher this year.
And we only budgeted $90, right?
Yes, that's right.
So, if we adopt this, then we save...
You'll save right off the bat.
Yeah.
About $100.
So, Johnson County, the lady that I've been speaking with in regards to this, she's out of the office. Once she has informed me that once everything's in order, which it is, she'll give me the contract or the paperwork sent to me, and then, once that's here, I will come back before you present it, and we can make your decision from that point on. So, then, my question to you is, what is the deadline for Gerard?
I don't know if there's a written contract with them. I'd have to pull that information to see if there's a written one.
Well, then...
Then if there's no written contract or anything, then that's just basically open. So, anytime would be a good time.
Okay. Well, we'll look for a contract, and then...
Can we think about it?
If I receive additional information, I'll reach out to one or both of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Set the time, come back up. Fair enough?
Good, fine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the item, next item is another budget item, Southeast Kansas Mental Health Budget. This has been an ongoing controversy, and I've been visiting with other counties. There are six counties that utilize for Southeast Kansas, Lynn County, or Allen County, Anderson County, the Ocho County, us, and I think my, I'm not for sure what the other two are. Most of them are because of some recent raises to the CEO and other staff have elected to use reduced, you know, budget money towards Southeast Kansas Mental...
The other counties have.
Yes. And they've also have recalled their board members. So, I think this is something to look into, get some more numbers on it, and I'll have some more information from the other counties as we go forward.
Do we have a board member?
We have two board members.
Okay.
That, I don't know how long they've been there, but I... It is Jeff.
I can speak to that.
Okay.
I've been there about 10 years.
10 years, and you're, Jeff, why don't you stand up?
I'm pastor of First Missionary Baptist Church in Uniontown. I became a part of Southeast Kansas Mental Health as a case manager. Used to be a four-county mental health, but I came here as pastor. And I've worked with them, and they asked me about 10 years ago to be on the board, and I've been there ever since. I can speak to it if you want me to.
Well, I think, I mean, who's the other board member?
Jeff. Jeff Fisher.
Jeff Fisher. Actually, I think we'll wait till we have the, I mean, and that's what I was, when I put that on there, I was hoping, you know, that we were still three at the, you know, but... So, when we get our third commissioner back, I would rather him be part of this decision.
So, this will be talked about the next week?
Yes.
Not, no.
Or maybe the meeting after. Whenever he's sworn in.
Would you like for me to reach out to you when they speak on it?
I'm sorry?
Would you like for me to reach out to you when they speak on it?
I would.
Can I get your number? And then, I'll call you.
Table too soon. All right. Next is our, wait here just a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be our contract agreement with Dr. Cohen's HR Services.
Okay. On that one, I reviewed that contract, and there were a couple of items that I didn't care for on there. I spoke to our counsel, Bob, and also Dr. Cohen with HR Solutions, and he removed one item, item seven on the one that you and the public got. That's been removed. And then, I got some further explanation on number nine, so I'm pleased with the new contract, and I believe you have that there now. So...
You want the old contract?
I don't see number nine.
Well, number nine is now number eight.
Oh, okay.
Because seven was removed. So, this is the old one. And so, you'll see that we took seven out.
Oh, okay.
Just because I didn't care for that.
Yeah.
So, this one's better. And so, I move we sign the new contract that Dr. Cohen sent.
Okay.
And they asked for you to sign as chairman. And so, that copy that you have there, I believe you can print your name and sign, and then, we can let Susan scan and email it back to them.
My name is printed, so...
Yeah, if you go ahead and type.
I crossed on that seven, because I thought, you got a different one?
Oh, here, I have one. You can...
I'll trade you.
Thank you. It's got my hole punches on it, though.
Okay. Next on the list would be Budget Committee selection.
Signed.
You got the same stack of names?
I do, yeah.
Did you guys want to vote on that last one, the Dr. Cohen agreement, or just...
I made a motion. Did you second it?
Oh, yeah, second.
Okay. Your bear?
Yes.
Milver? Yes. Do you want me to...
Do you want to read them out? And you can read a few, and then I'll read a few, and...
Okay.
Then we'll vote.
Okay. Okay, so, we have, we'll start with Greg Motley. He actually, we already appointed Greg to sit in on all budget hearings. So, but he did give us a different sheet of paper here. And it says, "I attended the first scheduled meeting, S E K R." This is not...
His professional biography?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So, the professional biography from Greg, I guess that would be the one that we're gonna use then. But we already, this is already out there. Do you want to read that one too, or...
No.
Okay, so...
I mean, we have already done that.
Yeah, and we've already appointed Greg to help us there. So, would you agree that we're gonna keep Greg?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, I have another one here from Carolyn Sin. "I'd like to be considered for Budget Advisory Committee. The following is my experience. Employed at Deal, Fletcher, and Banworth. General accounting duties, two years. Employed at Farmers Co-op. General accounting, purchasing, newsletter, accounts receivable, inventory, accounts payable, balancing, and preparation of financial reports, 17 years. Fort Scott City Commissioner. Served with four other commissioners. Regular Commissioner responsibilities. Communication with public, communication with state legislature while serving on various boards. Audit review, budget preparation, and approval. Overseeing city operations, long-term planning, five years. Fort Scott Community College Business Manager, CFO. Responsible for reporting and balancing of overall finance of the college. Supervised at the Accounting Office, Bookstore, Dormitory, Operation, Maintenance, Food Service, and assisted with grant writing. Supervise the annual audit for compliance with local, state, and federal guidelines and prepare the annual budget. Retired after 23 years full-time, however, had been back several times." Carolyn Sin. So, I asked Carolyn to send a letter, and I would love Carolyn to join the board.
Okay, well, let's read them, and then we'll...
And so, another will be Katie Casper. "My name is Katie Casper. I'm writing this letter to express my interest in serving on yet-to-be-formed Budget Advisory Board. I'm a lifelong resident of Bourbon County and a graduate of Fort Scott High School. I attended both Fort Scott Community College and Oklahoma State University, where I received a Bachelor of Science in Agricultural Sciences and Natural Resources with a major in agribusiness and a minor in finance in 2004. In the 20 years since my college graduation, I have worked in the finance industry in both the private and public sectors. From 2008 to 2019, I worked as a business and industry loan specialist for the U.S. Department of Agriculture with the Rural Development Agency. In the role, I served the 37 counties in the Eastern Third of Kansas, underwriting government loans and grants for rural businesses, nonprofits, and public entities in amounts as small as 1,500 and as large as 10 million. It was my job to be a steward of the taxpayer dollars while helping the government make investments and rule Kansas that were both sustainable and consistent with the mission of the agency. Since 2019, I have been senior leader and compliance officer at Union State Bank in both Fort Scott and Uniontown. I specialize in commercial lending and have helped navigate the government-guaranteed lending functions of the bank's product offerings. As compliance officer, it's my job to ensure that the bank follows all federal and state banking regulations, and that employees are kept up to date on those regulations that may pertain to their everyday job functions. I have over 20 years' experience in evaluating financial statements and depth service ability of companies and individuals of all walks. Additionally, I have performed the bookkeeping function for my husband's construction company, Casper Enterprises LLC, for the entire 10 years of the company's existence. I ensure the company complies with all tax, insurance, and Department of Transportation rules and regulations. I am now serving in my third non-consecutive term on the Fort Scott Community College Foundation Board, which oversees all scholarships and all other philo...
Got you.
For, can't say it. I'm going to skip it. Endowments bestowed upon the college. I believe I have the skill set necessary to perform the function of advising the commission on budget matters. It is my desire to try and help the county find ways to both save taxpayer dollars and maintain the services that are essential to county residents. I look forward to any way that I can use my professional skills to assist in this manner.
Okay, and the next one, I'll read.
Thank you.
Joseph D. Smith. Says, I am interested in being a member of the advisory board. I am a retired chemical civil environmental engineer and have degrees, as indicated on the attached bio sheet, biodata sheet. I also have a degree in accounting and have been working as a tax preparer and advisor at the Nevada, Missouri Office of H R Block. Operate JDS Small Business Bookkeeping, a service that assists with bookkeeping for the Ancient Path Ministries, a Masonic synagogue, and I do audits of the books every year. In the past, I have been treasurer for, Beat Obedala. What was it again? Okay. In Augusta, Kansas, Three Wooden Crosses Cowboy Truce, Augustus, Kansas, and Cowboys for Christ Augusta, Kansas Chapter. For all these organizations, I have prepared budgets on a yearly basis through my tax work. I am familiar with both city and business budget preparation. Thank you for your consideration. And then next is Marla Heckman. She says, I am interested in serving on the Budget Advisory Board for Bourbon County. My husband and I moved to Bourbon County from Tulsa, Oklahoma in September twenty twenty-three. I am currently the Executive Director of Presbyterian Village, and my husband works for Bourbon County Public Works. I have been an executive in healthcare for thirty-eight years. I was a regional director of operations for fifteen years with approximately ten healthcare communities in Oklahoma. I was responsible for guiding each executive director in those communities through their budget process. I'm familiar and comfortable with the budget process. I understand that sometimes you may, you must make tough decisions and, and does not always make people happy. During my first year of Presbyterian Village, I managed a, to make up a deficit of approximately a hundred and two thousand dollars. I am accomplished, I accomplished this by working with department heads, providing them documents to help manage their departments. I could provide you a book of accomplishments over thirty-eight years. Even though I am proud of these accomplishments, I take none that, I am not one that takes the credit. Teamwork is vital to our success. Thank you for taking time to read my letter of interest. I look forward to serving Bourbon County flourish under your leadership. However, if I can be helpful to that, I am happy to be a part of that team. And then the last one?
There's two more.
Two more? Oh, yeah, Joseph, Mr. Joseph D. Smith.
Didn't you read that?
You want to read that one?
No, I think you did.
Did I read that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Then all I got left is Josh Jones.
There's one here from Michael Hoyt, but it's addressed to Katie Bowers.
And it was for counselor, or for commissioner? Not for budget? That's what I saw.
Yeah, so maybe.
He must have sent the wrong thing. I just forwarded it on, I didn't even read it.
Okay.
To be quite honest.
So I would assume that he's wanting to be on this board?
I think his intention was this board, because his email stated that.
All right, well, then I'll.
He's probably just giving you his resume.
His resume outlines prior work and experience, formal education, two bachelor's degrees of arts and master programs. And there's quite a, quite a resume here, so. He's a firm believer in the will of the people and the rule of law. Lady justice is blind to all influences outside of the laws approved by the people, and the will of the people can be heard by their voices and votes, and votes should be considered in action, taken by election and appointed representatives. And he said, I will hear you.
You may read the one from Josh.
Okay.
To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my interest in serving on the Bourbon County Budget Advisory Board. I have spent over a decade reviewing the government budgets and have taken multiple courses related to public finance. Additionally, during my time as a Fort Scott City Commissioner, I gained firsthand experience navigating the budgeting process and working to ensure transparency and fiscal responsibility.
All right, so then we'll just go, I'll just go down the names as I wrote them down, and then make a motion, and if you want to consider that person, then you can second it. Does that sound all right? And then we can vote, or do you just want to go? I mean.
Well, so, so we've already both agreed and appointed Greg. Would you like me to, to give you two picks, and you can have a couple? Would that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would like to take Carolyn and Katie.
So you pick Carolyn and Katie. That leaves us three, so then two more would give us five.
Well, you got Greg.
We already got Greg, yeah, that gives us three.
Greg, Carolyn, and Katie.
Yeah. So I would, I would recommend Mrs. Heckman. And Josh Jones.
Okay.
Oh, I guess I, them will be the two that, that gives us five.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for sending in letters of interest.
Is that what you're going with? Is this, this picks?
I mean, unless you want to go, consider the, go six, but I'm.
I'm certainly pleased with the, the two that I have there, so if you're pleased with the. Yes, yeah.
Okay, can I have a motion in a second, please?
I make a motion that we accept these five individuals that we have picked and for the advisory budget, budget committee.
I second. Do you want me to list names?
Yeah, I got Greg, Carolyn, Katie, Marla, and Josh Jones. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, Milburn?
Yes.
Fairbauer?
Yes. And next on the item is parliamentarian proposal. Have you spoke to the individual that?
Yeah.
I have spoke to the individual that I had in mind and was told, no.
Oh. So Katie said she'd be happy to help out, and somebody did suggest that, and this is Katie Bowers, different Katie.
Right.
Somebody did suggest that we have more than one, so that our schedule don't have to be their schedule. And I think that's a really nice idea. I don't know if we have more than one people that want to, but.
I, right now, I don't have anybody else in mind, and, but maybe, you know, down the road, if somebody comes to mind or comes forward, we can do that. I talked with Katie at the Republican Convention the other night, and she said, yes, she'd be more than happy.
Yeah.
And so I have no problems with her.
Okay.
So you want to motion on this, or?
Certainly can. I move we accept Katie Bowers as a parliamentarian for our Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County, and add parliamentarians as they decide they want to volunteer.
Yeah. I second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Fairbauer?
Yes. And next on the items are mission statement. And we're still going with your short version or long version?
Okay.
I like the long version. I went back and,
Okay.
and, and listened to them.
Okay.
I wish I'd had a copy of them, but I didn't get a copy, so.
Okay.
So I could, like, read them, but I did listen to you read them at that meeting on the second, so.
Okay. And then I can make you some copies, just a moment, I'm sorry.
If we accept it, we need to, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it to go on our employee handbook.
I'm just trying to take notes. So we did, I did take a, somebody sent a message. Sorry, you already were trying to address these things, and I was taking notes.
Oh, that's all right.
I'm not trying to not pay attention to you. So I do have two of these. Thank you.
Sure.
I can go ahead and start reading these again.
Okay.
So this, these are, again, the ones that I submitted. There's a mission, Authentic Bourbon County Values Rural Lifestyle, A Place Where We Enjoy the Benefits of Rural Living While Remaining Connected to the Opportunities of the Nearby City. We honor our rich farmland, agricultural heritage, and livestock industry, recognizing their vital role in sustaining our community. At the heart of our efforts is a deep respect for our taxpayers who contribute to the growth and well-being of our county. Our mission is to ensure that these values, rural lifestyle, agriculture, and responsible, and responsible fiscal stewardship work together harmoniously to build prosperous, sustainable future for all residents. And then the smaller one could be a vision. Bourbon County Values Our Rural Lifestyle, Our Farmland and Our Agricultural Heritage, While Recognizing the Importance of Responsible Growth, Working Together While Being Good Stewards of Bourbon County Land and Our Taxpayers, We Aim to Build a Prosperous Sustainable Future for Our County. And Courtney Halsey submitted a couple. She liked that we were going in the direction of a mission. And her mission is, that she submitted, to serve and support all Bourbon County residents by fostering a strong, safe, and thriving rural community through responsible governance, sustainable development, and collaborative partnerships that honor our agricultural heritage and promote opportunity for all. And vision, to be a vibrant and resilient rural county where families, businesses, and communities flourish, rooted in tradition, guided by innovation, and united in our commitment to a prosperous future for generations to come. So I'm glad that that sparked, and, and people thought that they've.
I think I like your mission and her vision.
Okay.
So. You'd be okay with that?
Yep.
I'd be okay with that. I make a, a move that we adopt the mission statement submitted by Commissioner Milburn and the vision statement submitted by Courtney Halsey.
I second.
Fairbauer?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes. I need to learn to write faster, don't I?
Okay. Office restructuring, that is mine. So what I hoped to accomplish in our order of business today was that we get some of these things scratched off of our list.
I understand.
Down here on the bottom. So with that in mind, there was a, Mr. Walker submitted the original plan. Did you get a chance to review that?
I did, I did.
Okay, and so what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, you know, that we have a lot going on, and I've said no to just about every other thing that has come across here that's not an absolute necessity. And so I'm going to continue with that and just say not right now.
Okay.
For me.
I did get a message today from a citizen that kind of seconded what you just said there about the cost and not knowing, you know, where we're at budget-wise and, and that. So I would believe, but overall, and she asked what was the, the overall reason for doing this. So we're going to, you know, and, and like I said, you know, I think you're, you have a valid point that we don't need to rush into this, because we're not going to become five until January. But this room is going to become very small come January. And then the overall, the overall movement of, of different people to different offices was to accommodate the size that even those offices are growing. So I, but again, you know, come January is when we're, I mean, we're not going to have, I mean, we can get five around the table, but then several commissioners are going to have their backs to the, to the public and that type of stuff. So we're going to have to, we're going to have to think something down the road.
We fit up there together.
Yeah, we could probably put.
Scute in.
Yeah, I think, well, and I don't mind, I don't want to, I don't want this to be just, you know, I'll let Greg sit here, you know.
But no, I mean.
Space, yeah, but I mean, also, I mean, furniture might be something that we reconsider too, so. At this point, I would tend to agree. I mean, I would just make a move, I move that we table it until later on this year, but let's, or actually, I just move that we cancel it altogether for now, and we can resurface it later.
I second it.
That gets it off the list.
Milburn?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have any signed up? Nope. That sounds good. Moving right along, new business. I move that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters of individuals, non-elected personnel, to protect their privacy per K C A pursuant to K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. Is the sheriff still here? Huh?
Yes.
Yeah. How long, Sheriff?
Deputy Murphy, advisor to the sheriff, and then the sheriff, Kevin Davidson, about twenty fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. We return back here at six thirty-three.
I second. Did you make a motion?
Huh?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
I second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Fairbauer?
Yes.
I probably want to appoint somebody to organize the first meeting. They didn't appoint anybody to be in charge of this, just to get around chairman, so. I want to think about that.
Yeah.
Where are you? Where are you?
Um...
You can't come out till six thirty.
With the Miller's shower.
What they think on my time.
A minute.
So ready? All right, motion, I move that we return to session, no action.
Second.
Feel better?
Yes.
No worries.
Yes.
Okay, I move that we break for executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected person- personnel to protect their privacy. This will be for how long?
Just ten minutes.
Ten minutes involving?
Just you and I.
Just you and I.
Yeah.
Commissioner Milburn and myself.
A second.
And we'll return back to here.
You can't come out till six thirty. With the Miller's shower. What they think on my time. I just got advice.
A minute. It says live, but it says error.
So ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, motion, I move that we return to session, no action.
Second.
Feel better?
Yes.
No worries.
Yes.
Okay, I move that we break for executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one to discuss personnel matters of individual non-elected person- personnel to protect their privacy. This will be for how long?
Just ten minutes.
Ten minutes involving?
Just you and I.
Just you and I.
Yeah.
Commissioner Milburn and myself.
A second.
And we'll return back to here.
Letter from the city of Fort Scott. It says, I will, we will provide water and sewer to that land at most. And so Bedco has every right to go get that land back from him because he did fulfill his agreement. Of course, he couldn't fulfill the agreement without water and sewer. And they know he has every grounds to sue, sue them, and so they let, just let it lie.
Sue the city?
He can sue the city because he's got a letter that says, we'll provide free water and sewer. Signed by the city manager, now probably the city would say if they went to law.
All right, we'll return to session, no action. I move that we return to session, no action.
Second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Feel better?
Yes. All right, now.
Greg asked that you guys might appoint somebody to get the advisory board going.
Call for speaking?
Yes, I, I move we appoint Greg to report to the commission and to bring everybody together.
Be careful what you ask for. I second.
Feel better?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So then now next, we're into beginning of new business, property disaster relief application. Dwayne and Tanya Glassrock. Are they here?
I don't think they have to be here, I think that we need to just.
Do we have that app?
Yeah, I think that is in these things.
I.
It was in the email.
Yeah.
So, I think there's an, do you have an official one in here? So I did look up the statute and so, is that mine?
Yeah.
Oh. So this is the one for signing and I did look up the.
Oh, yeah.
Statute for, and that's what it's being done under, I believe, is the statute. Is that right, Susan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. So.
And the pictures are proof.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I don't see why not.
Okay, I move that we sign the abatement for the seventeen twenty-six Buckeye Road for Scott by Dwayne and Tanya Glassock with using the pictures as proof as to why, the pictures that we were emailed.
Okay, I second.
Milburn?
Yes.
Feel better?
Yes.
Did it just take one signature more?
It looks like all three, or two. Okay, and next up is Mr. Motley, Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission.
This one on here.
Is it red?
Yep.
Okay.
So no, no action necessary about the commission, I just wanted to inform the commission that this organization's really the driver of economic development in the twelve county area in Southeast Kansas. They have two point nine million in assets on their books and grants and loans. Montgomery County has been the county that's really kind of continually hit them up over and over again, infrastructure, all kinds of, of loans and grants have come through S E K R P C for, for Montgomery County. Other counties like Bet have done, done similar things. We, we've been kind of minimalist and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that these, these people are kind of the connection to grants and loans for Bourbon County. We have three applications pending now, I think Bronson's next on the agenda. So Bronson in the parks, and then Fort Scott's municipal auditorium, and then they, they're working with them on a new housing grant application to perhaps provide some affordable housing for Fort Scott. So I just wanted to make the public aware too, that besides county and municipal infrastructure and affordable housing, there's loans to establish and expand or retain employees and new businesses. There's agricultural grants, I wasn't impressed by the stable of, of what was available there, you know, stuff like cornstour and things like that, that I, I just didn't see as very, being very valuable. But if anybody in the county wants to, to know what's available through this organization and grants or loans, they can contact the commission, you guys can get in touch with me and I can contact them and just let them know what's available. But we should just keep these programs in mind so that we can, so we're not on the sidelines and we can get our fair share of money, so.
Okay. Grants that, or grant that I'm looking at right, or interested in right now would be for a animal shelter facility, so if there's anything that they can do to help out on that.
Certainly, they could, that's in the realm.
I'll be bringing a deal to the table here probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, you can't believe the list of.
Yeah.
Stuff that they financed or gotten grants for, you know, I'm thinking about the deferred maintenance on the courthouse too, the courthouse building, that's a possibility, so.
Wonderful, thank you.
Very good. All right, thank you. Next up would be Bronson City Park, CBD, C D B G grant letter of support, Kelly Perry. Is that just the letter or is she?
She's not here.
Okay.
Other than what was in the email.
I should speak to that if you want.
She's just adding for asking for the support, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, at the, at the last executive board meeting, they discussed that application, I think there were still some pieces that Bronson was missing, I think this letter's one of them. And they, they just want to improve their park over there and do some infrastructure things and I, I don't think there's any risk to Bourbon County and the commission.
No commitment from Bourbon County, just a letter of support so they can have a better chance.
Right, exactly.
We would like to support that, do you have one for us to sign or you don't want me to use mine?
It's mine, okay.
You want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I move we sign the support letter for Bronson City Park to try to help them get their grant.
All right, I second.
Feel better?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner comments.
You got anything?
Um, no.
Okay.
Actually, let's look at this list before we, before we go into commissioner comments, the list down here and see what we want to move forward for next week.
So it looks like redistrict, redistricting resolution.
Yeah, them, them are already moving up, yeah.
Yeah, on the four and the.
Camera work session, no, that was one, but we were, we had tabled for that off of our.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we need to discuss that.
And then the N R P?
And the N R, yeah.
And I think that Doughty can't come that day, so it's going to be moved.
That's going to be moved?
Yeah.
Okay.
So would you like to?
Well, it looks like we got quite a few because we also got K Camp presentation, do you know what that is?
Yeah, that you guys had asked for them to come, your liability carrier and.
Okay.
His name's David Lamb, he actually used to be the county clerk in Lynn County, so he is now working for K Camp.
Okay, all right, so that, that makes for a pretty long meeting, so I don't know.
Want to just move those up unless something else comes up?
And including your, your deviation stuff?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we put all that, move all that up?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And I think like job descriptions handbook, that type of stuff, and even workman's compensation, we can remove all them and hand them over to the.
For Dr. Coward, yep.
Yeah. So.
All right.
And then that leaves economic development, we can do that at a later date. And then the nine one one agreement, you're still working with Mr. Matkins on that?
You know, I haven't spoke to him in a, in a hot minute on that, so.
Okay, well, we'll just.
He may have it on his mind still somehow, so.
We'll just wait, yeah, animal control, something I'm going to probably bring up around the thirtieth, so we can put that on June thirtieth.
Okay. So what we'll get with Bob on that also before the thirtieth because we need to, because she was kind of asking for, you know, a piece of property and.
Right, and I've been, yeah, I've been looking, we got a list of property, so we'll see what we can do. But then if we can back it up with some grant money and stuff like that too, that would be very, 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 very good, something we haven't been able to do probably, that we keep kicking that can down.
Yeah, I know it.
As they say. Okay, so now commissioner comments.
Okay, so last week, the commission called on the citizens of Bourbon County to step up and serve, and I am so very pleased with the willingness and support of our, that our community answered with. Our citizens not only answered the call of the commission, but that of the Republican Party as well at the convention to replace the commissioner Weisenhut. There was a wonderful turnout last Thursday that was so very pleasing for me to witness, so to the citizen suburban county, thank you. That's all I have, David.
And I have nothing in come up, in comments, so I move that we adjourn the meeting.